Five board members here, the fifth one may turn up, but we have a quorum right now. Starting from my right, John Martin, Mary Ann Remy, and Heath Salit, and I'm the Chair, Eric Worth. We have a couple of public hearings on the agenda tonight. First, Three High Street. So let's start the public hearing for Three High Street. I'll point out, the notice, the public notice for this hearing was published in the newspaper last week, PCNR. The applicants submitted their mailing receipts to me, and the receipts are complete and satisfactory, and this proposal is exempt from environmental review under SECRA. Have the applicants brought a signed affidavit? All right. So would you like to give us a presentation of your project?
Yes, certainly. I sent drawings, I hope you've received updated drawings.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I'll have to pass those out to the board members.
Okay. We revised our drawings after the workshop, as we call it, with dust. And with the change in the side yard setback for narrow lots, setback reduced to seven and a half feet, reduced our need for a variance very greatly. And I colored on the drawing, the floor area, the triangular floor area in green, of 3.6 square feet is the portion of the proposed addition that extends beyond the setback.
Would you mind just backing up a little, and since some of the audience members have not, were not at the workshop, just kind of giving an overview of what the project is?
The project is an existing house on High Street, one house in from the corner of Main Street. The house is non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming. It, we are proposing a rear addition, a second floor addition on top of an existing rear kitchen addition, and the replacement of a one-story porch with a new screened porch at the rear. We're proposing to remove one existing shed and apply that spare footage to the addition of the house.
And in the course of this work, you will be slightly expanding the footprint of the existing one-story addition toward the south, and that will cause the footprint to extend into the setback area by one foot, and let's see.
By a triangle that's one foot, one and a half inches by about seven feet on the long leg.
Right. So it will, okay, so it will, it's a sliver, kind of a sliver of a triangle, at its greatest it will be one foot, one and a half inches into the side yard. And you have a reduced side yard of seven and a half feet because this lot is narrow and it's subject to the narrow lot exception in the code.
And I've done that mathma, I've repeated that mathematical calculation that you explained at the workshop on the coverage here.
Okay. And the total lot coverage will go down slightly. You've got, the applicant submitted a new zoning conformance worksheet, which you see it's printed in yellow, I printed it out, and it's, has the updated numbers. You can see that at the bottom, the total lot coverage goes down by 1.2%.
If they were removal of the shed.
Yes.
So that doesn't, is that indicated here?
Yes.
Just so.
It's indicated in the existing shed to be removed as part of the existing lot coverage, and then the proposed lot coverage does not include that.
Oh, I see.
So that's the.
Your total lot coverage was 42.5.
And it's going down.
42.5%, right. I was looking at the number, 37% for the house.
Yeah, so the house goes up, but the lot, but the sheds, the total sheds go down.
I candidly don't have really any questions since the, with the previous conversation had, and then the reduction and the work done, and it's, it's really straightforward and clear to me.
So the green triangle there is the, just the one sliver that is intruding on the south side.
Exactly. And there are photographs, if you have.
I have more photographs.
There, the ones submitted so far are posted on the Village website.
Here.
Yeah, I brought the laptop last time, but anyway.
These are photographs.
I have to have it pulled up on screen.
Okay. That's great. Of the four elevations of the house.
Yeah, it's useful to see the photographs. I think it's worth noting that the property in the direction, on the southeast side, in the direction of Main Street, is, has a large backyard, so that side of the house is facing a unusually deep backyard, which makes the intrusion of the side yard that much less of a concern potentially.
That's a good point.
And just the overall, you know, bulk appearance, right, of the neighborhood, effect of increased height.
That's why I took that last photograph, just because the houses, as you go up High Street.
Are higher.
All are higher, and most of, at least those two immediate ones seem to have a very similar rear addition in terms of massing.
So that's looking west, it's not necessarily the same looking south or east, but it's enough that you have two strikes.
Right. And then please.
We did not receive any written comments from the public on this application. Is there anyone here tonight who'd like to speak about the application? No, I guess not, so no comments.
For what it's worth, Liz has spoken to all of her immediate neighbors who only voiced support. I don't know if that translates to.
Okay.
Should we motion to close the public hearing?
I think.
I don't have more for any questions.
Okay.
No questions.
Somebody want to move that?
To move to close the public hearing.
Second it.
All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The public hearing is closed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board members will now go over the five statutory criteria we're supposed to apply. First one is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area of areas. John, what do you think?
Well, you know, there's an increase in bulk to the backyard, the second story addition just to the house. Might be removing a smaller low-line shed to the rear, but at the same point in time you have neighboring homes that have similar construction to the rear. So, you know, in balance, I just don't see a detriment under the circumstances of this one, as well, the other property adjacent has an open yard, which doesn't, you know, doesn't cause the addition to have that great of an impact, or it's at least mitigated in that respect.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Aye, would agree with what John said.
I'm in agreement.
Yes, I would agree also, it is a very, it's a minor intrusion, there is generous space in the neighboring properties, so I would say that no undesirable, and also, the neighborhood is like all of the, all of the, most of the lots in the central village, it's, all the lots are crowded, and houses are close to each other, so this, this kind of tight fit is not, is not out of character, not contrary to the neighborhood feeling. The second criterion, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Mary Ann, what do you think?
That, that's the one that's always the hardest for me. I guess in my mind, it's such a small variance, it's hard to think about it that way. So, I'm not sure, but it doesn't seem so.
I would say, I would answer to this one, yes. The applicant didn't directly address this point, but it seems pretty clear that a little bit could be shaved off the, shaved off the plan to achieve conformity, so I would say yes. Heath?
Yeah, balancing, you know, my first instinct is no, but I think that's been persuaded by the fact that some of it was already shaved off the plan, and yet, the plan is still requiring variance, so. I mean, I believe in, with the, with the description here that we're following, yes.
John?
Well, I look at the fact that it's a narrow lot. There's very few places you could go, I think, in order to make the second floor addition sort of in line with the rest of the house, you know, it's the way it's kind of constructed, that, you know, well, everything can always be achieved, pretty much by other means, I think in this case, it's restricted by the narrow lot situation, and it seems like it kept it fairly tight, and it just, you know, approaches marginally into the side yard setback. So, I, on the, on the whole, on the balance, I don't think it can be achieved in other means, unless you're just going to make the, you know, back addition smaller.
Thank you. Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. I'll start by saying no, I don't think it is substantial either numerically or, or in its effect. Mary Ann?
Yeah, I agree, and especially since the rear shed is being eliminated, I would agree.
Yeah, that's a nice, that opens up, opens up the sightline. John?
I agree with both points.
Heath?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Heath?
I don't see an adverse impact, I think it's in likeness to the Village, especially the, the actual, the commonality with High Street, and I think it's a very thoughtful proposal, and shows that there are benefits based on the work and the reduction of the shed to the community.
Okay. John?
I agree with the points that Heath has made. It doesn't appear that it poses any environmental concern, as it is, most of the surrounding property is paved, and I imagine the new roof line will have gunnery on it, because I think the current, current portions of the roof do. So I don't see any impact in that regard.
I agree with no impact. It's too small to affect anything imaginable like airflow, sunlight, so no. What about you, Mary Ann?
Uh, no.
And last, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Pete?
I'll start with yes.
Yeah. Mary Ann?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I agree. The applicant chose to undertake the work. So now, I'll look back and see where these fell, whether, whether the board's opinions support or oppose the application. Number one, undesirable change, support, supports the application, no undesirable Number two, whether benefit can be achieved by other means, there was a split vote, two to two, so that's indecisive. Number three, substantial, everybody said no, so that goes in favor of the application. And number four, adverse effect, everybody said no, so that's also in favor. Number five, self-created, there everybody said yes, so that goes against the application, but this is a weak factor, because it's basically all, all area variances are, do arise from self-created actions. So on balance.
Eric, can I add something?
Certainly.
But this, I think in part deals with three and four, as I was looking at it, and I was just getting to think that the house, the existing house, covers 37%. So that's an existing, you know, you know, non-conforming, but grandfathered use. The fact that we're expanding it, going up, does tend to expand a non-conforming use. That's my opinion, I know your interpretation's different.
Do you, can you point to something in the code about primary residence?
Yeah, it increases the bulk. I'll, I'll look it up, I'm just saying, it's, it's my opinion, it's not going to change my overall opinion here, but I just wanted to make it of record that.
Yeah, it's an important point. I thought that the code refers to all buildings together, maximum 30%. It doesn't single out a number from the primary.
Well, it is all buildings together, but the existing house itself is in excess of 37%, so it's already non-conforming, you know, as a whole, and now you're increasing the bulk of it.
Well, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know where the code sets a limit on the house, the primary building, at 30%. I thought the only limit given is.
See, what you're doing is, if you're going up, you're actually working within that 37%, so it, I know it's, it seems like apples and oranges, but you're working within a 37% footprint. But this is, this is a matter that I know is going to be discussed a little later on, I just wanted to make that point, just so it's out of record and we're just not glossing over it.
Well, it should be, it should be addressed definitively. If I look at the R1, regulations for R1, it's possible, I've been misreading it, I see maximum permitted, this is 134-7D, building percentage of lot coverage, 30%, so building percentage of lot coverage. I think that means all buildings together.
That is correct, but in this case, the, the home itself exceeds it, and then you're expanding it. You're expanding it, so it tends to enhance the non-conforming aspect of the building. It evokes a, I'm just, just making that point, because I know this is something that's been debated a little bit, and I just want to make it of record that it's a concern for me with regards to this application, the fact that the other neighboring houses, it's in line with the community, and there appear to be no public opposition to the plan. That's where I might find exceptions to others, than other situations where people have concern of how big the problem's going to get.
Okay.
For instance, there's one on Fair Street, near Northern Avenue, the old gas station that is less than like seven feet off, off the street, maybe three feet off the sidewalk. And it used to be one story, now it's going up to two stories, and it's sitting, you know, in quite a dense appearance, right, flush up against the sidewalk. To me, that's increasing a non-conforming, see, that building was sizable, and it occupied more space than it should. I don't know if anybody's addressed it, it's, we're not into enforcement, but that's my point, it's an issue of both going up.
All those, all those, all those concerns are not regulated by numbers in the code, so you've got to find something, you know, that a building is, is exceeding a given maximum that's stated in the code.
Yeah, it's called, it's simply called, I think there's a portion in the code, and I don't have the provision offhand, but it's called expanding a non-conforming use.
Yeah.
A not, not, a, a, a non-conforming structure in this case, not a use, the use remains the same, it's residential, but.
Well, then you have to point to.
I have to get the code.
The non-conformity, no, I know which section.
But it's not going to change my opinion about the overall application today, in light of the community aspect, the last, the lack of public opposition, and the fact that the variance itself on a narrow lot takes up such a small space.
All right.
It may be different in other cases.
Okay, let's keep trying to work out, I think this is all tentative because the code's being revised, it's a new code, it's a matter of months.
No doubt.
But you're fine, you don't, you don't object to proceeding with this approval.
No, not at all, not at all, just because of the way the rest of the neighborhood's showing up, and for, and for the other reasons I mentioned.
All right, great. That means if I look at the balance of the five factors, we have three of them in favor, one mixed, and then one against, which is the weakest one, number five. So I would move, make a motion to approve the application, because on balance, it is not detrimental, and it is not substantial, and therefore, it is a reasonable, it's a reasonable and justifiable change.
Anybody second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, very much.
I think you still have to go to the HDRB, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Right.
Eric, I didn't mean to throw that at you, I just prefer 37%. And because of the new structure that I'm managing, because it's sudden appearance.
Yeah. Well, I don't think you were at the workshop first time for this, you need to talk about lot coverage, and it seems like now, it's clear that only number that the code gives us is total building.
Right. I'll get, I'll figure out where this is, it can be found on the internet, and referencing back to our own code. There'll be a discussion on it, and it'll pinpoint where the village will.
All right. The next item is a public hearing on 15 Orchard Street. Now, I think board members should have, do all the board members have the application packets left over from, from the workshop?
Yeah, because there's the workshop, the rest of it.
So this is an application submitted by Megan Shay and Michael Willorn, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. For detached garage. The notice for this public hearing was published in the newspaper last week, mailing, I received the mailing receipts, they're complete and satisfactory, and the proposal is exempt from environmental review under SECRA. Have you brought a signed affidavit?
Yes.
You can keep those, we don't require them, keep them for your records.
I have copies of the statements and everything.
Right, okay.
I just have a question, what's the width for the narrow lot?
It's, everything below 60 feet wide is subject to a narrower side yard, narrower than the regular 10 feet.
Got it.
And there's a formula for what it should be.
Right, if our lot is 50 feet, and I didn't, I wasn't aware of that narrow lot, so.
Oh, it doesn't apply to your application, because your project, the detached garage, is governed by a different part of the code, which, which states the single limit, 10-foot limit, and it does not make any exceptions for width of the lot.
Sorry.
Megan, just one technicality, could you come up here, and we dated it November 3rd, but the.
November 3rd?
Oh, sorry, September 3rd.
Okay.
But the affidavit is essentially saying, as of today, the sign is meant to be.
Oh, I see, I see.
So it should be today's date.
So I need to correct it.
So if you just correct the date initially.
Do I need to show initials?
Yeah.
Okay. So today's the 16th, is that correct?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm going to take the clock. Sure.
I'm passing off for future reference during the hearing, the applicant sent me a, the CBA decision for a property across the street, which is also called the detached garage.
In 2009.
Yeah. Right, so whenever you're ready, we will be happy to see your presentation.
And if you want to shut the light, the switch is right outside the courtroom.
I have to refresh it. I'm going to need to get internet access. Do you have the Wi-Fi code?
Yeah.
Sorry, I've not done a presentation since before COVID. This room.
It's the V C S E D. It should be the top one.
Is it the boards? You know, these all, I'm going to graduate from that. But, okay, so it's the top one?
Yep.
Alright, great.
It's asterisk.
Uh huh.
Village with a capital V.
Uh huh.
10516.
I'm sorry, what?
10516.
Oh.
Asterisk. And just hit I agree.
Sorry.
These are all the names of the board members. Board of directors.
Oh, no. Just take one, there we go.
Looks good.
So my name is Madeline Sanchez and I'm an architect presenting this project on behalf of Megan Shea and Michael Gilmore. It's called A Living at 15 Orchard Street. Since 2015, we're seeking a variance to build a one-story, one-car detached garage at the rear of the property at the end of the existing driveway, which requires a variance of the minimum side and rear yard requirements. The new garage will place a garage, will replace a garage that was for the new structural reasons that arose emergently and will be in the area where the former garage stood. The new garage will follow a pattern of detached garages on Orchard Street and in the village and continue to continue the charactery. We hope to show that the new garage will be in its most practical location, would minimize impact to the surroundings, and will enhance the neighborhood. So we'll look at photos of the existing and surrounding properties, the existing and proposed site plans, architectural drawings that were proposed, and studies of how the new garage would look when adjoining neighbors vantage points. So this is the Google Maps. Here's the house here. This is Orchard Street, Mountain Avenue, Main Street, and B Street. And this is the north, east, south, and west. So you can see that the block is fairly large, it's often quite large than the surrounding blocks. It was a very healthy tree buffer in the center of the lot. Photos of the neighborhood. Here's 15 Orchard, there, 13 Orchard, 17 Mountain Avenue. This is the corner of Mountain and Orchard, that's 17 Mountain Avenue. It's an existing house and the driveway. So the new garage would sit in that space there. And you can see the house is a two-story, house across the gable. Existing blacktop on the side, so the garage would sit here. And this shows the 17 Mountain Avenue, the space between the two houses.
While you're on this photo, could you remind us how far off the property line that, that standing wall is?
A foot off the side of the property line. Going around the rear of the house, there's the driveway. This is the backyard, which has a covered porch and this very large tree, which we'll talk about a little bit later. So the, the yard is flat, but then it drops down seven feet to the neighboring property. This is 15 Mountain Avenue. This is a roof of a shed that's on 15 Mountain Avenue's property. And this is a retaining wall with a new fence on it, it's a new retaining wall. And this is the remains of the former garage, which we'll talk about later. So Mountain Avenue, 17 Mountain Avenue and its garage. So Mountain Avenue has a very steep slope, so this is why you have that drop in grade. And this is the retaining wall of 15 Mountain Avenue. And then up a little further is the retaining wall for 15 Orchard Street. And the retaining wall of 15 Orchard Street is on their property. So there's the wall that we need there. These are views to the west from 15 Orchard, looking back to the house on B Street, and then looking southwest, so you see that healthy tree up there. There are other houses in, on, on Orchard Street and throughout the village with garages in the rear at the end of the side driveway. This is on 11 Orchard Streets. And the relationship between the house and the garage and the street is a well-established relationship in the village. And it's an important asset of the fabric of the village and the patterns that you see through the village. This is 18 Orchard Street, which is across the street. We'll talk about that later. And these are other detached garages on Orchard. The neighbor 13 Orchard, across the street 16 Orchard, and down the street 9 Orchard. And so our project will continue that pattern and follow the village archetype and character with the community in scale of a one-car garage similar to these. This is the existing current property survey. The lot is a non-conforming lot, it's 5,032 square feet. This is Orchard Street and the existing house. The existing driveway, the existing retaining wall. There's that shed that we saw on the lower property and the tree. The house setbacks currently do not conform either. For those that are confused about this, basically, this house would not be built by today's code. It was in the old code. So the house was built prior to the new zoning code. I'm sorry. Okay? This is a survey of the, from 2016 showing the former garage in that northwest corner here. So the former garage was 11 by 20 feet, 220 square feet. And it sat two and a half feet back from the rear yard and one foot from the side yard. And it sat on the retaining wall at the back of the property. And because it's in that spot, it's also, it was non-conforming as well. So these are photos of the old garage. It was made of concrete block and it had some clapboard. The roof was fairly shallow. And this is where the garage doors were. So Megan and Michael saved the garage doors and have refurbished them and would hope to use them in the new garage. The new garage doors are four feet wide and seven foot two high. So we realized that we would not inherit forgiveness because we proposed to replace an old garage. However, we wanted to provide this background information to show you that there was a need for the structure that was being met for parking, to store bicycles, outdoor toys, and yard equipment, to keep the yard neat. It also provided a boundary to the neighbor to the north. So what happened with this garage is a story having to do with that rear retaining wall. So when they moved in in 2015, the old retaining wall had cracks in it. So they hired Sal Fadala to come to fix it. And while they were fixing it, the retaining wall that sat under the old garage started to fail. And so it started to move and the C M U units were appearing to fail. So in order to prevent possible collapse of the entire garage, the owners obtained a demolition permit from the Culkin Building Department to remove the old garage. And then they built a new retaining wall, the entire length of the property. This is the detail of the wall that's remaining. So what are we proposing? We're proposing to replace the old garage with this shown in yellow. It would be 12 feet by 18 feet, 216 feet, actually less than the original garage. And that would be placed in a similar area at the end of the existing driveway. But this time, they want to pull it back from that retaining wall so that, so that it doesn't happen again. And so that the new garage would sit on its own foundation wall and be really stable. So the distance from the property line to the proposed garage would be seven and a half feet. And because we have this 10-foot setback here, there's that line coming across, the variance we're asking on the rear is two and a half feet. For the side, we would like to keep the, the line of the wall that's there, so it's in line with the driveway. So the variance would be nine feet, since it would be one feet, one foot from the, the property line. So we considered other locations for the garage that would not require variance. And so this block in pink is where that would be. So it's 10 feet off of the north line, lot line, 10 feet off of the south line line. But it has a few issues. One is that it would require reconfiguring the driveways so you could pull into the car this way. And it would require adding more perme, adding more blacktop or non-permeable surface. It would, you can make it harder to pull out and it pulls the garage closer to the existing house. It also reduces the size of their backyard, cutting off the backyard. When it's already 50 feet, it's pretty restrictive. And if the garage were to be here, it would reduce the backyard to just 27 feet wide. And it would look a little out of character to be placed in the middle of the yard. But equally important is that it would require removing this tree. And it's a magnificent tree. It's a Quanzen cherry tree. This is the photo of the actual tree. This is a photo I got from Google because I wasn't able to photograph it in the spring. But it does bloom in the spring. And it's not an ordinary cherry tree. The Quanzen, as per Wikipedia, I know that's hard to read. You have a better copy in front of you. Is, was developed in the Edo period in Japan. They had it identified by a certified arborist. And it's a mutation from selective breeding of other cherry trees. It has, it's called a double flower with 20 to 50 petals in each flower. And it has very large flowers that are deep pink. So I think it would be a shame to have to take it down just to make the garage work and, and supply. So our conclusion was that the only practical location was to have it in that northwest corner. So what are we building? We're hoping to build. This is the proposed architectural drawings. This is the plan and then the four elevations. The east elevation, which would face the road. The west elevation, which would face the river. The north elevation, which would face the neighbor of 17 Mountain Avenue. And the south elevation, which would face the backyard and the neighbor to 13 Mountain Avenue. So here you have the 12 feet, 18 feet. These are the garage doors that we're, we're reusing, seven foot two high, eight feet wide. And that sort of sets up everything else. So this is now a header that's going to go over that large opening, which sets up the E to be at nine feet. And then the distance from grade to the top of the ridge is 15. For the zoning, it's 11 feet high because they do it from the grade to the middle of the gable. That's how they calculate it. So the structure would be wood and it would have clapboard siding. There's a door on the side so you can get easily in and out from the yard instead of having to open these very large doors. And what else can I tell you about the new garage? Oh, yes. We're, we're, we're hoping to match the pitch of the, of the existing house. So that's the other reason why it's a little taller than the old garage. The old garage was 11 feet from the floor to the ridge that we can calculate and estimate from the photos. So this gets a little taller because we're changing the pitch. We're also planning to install gutters. In their house currently, they harvest rainwater in barrels from their gutters and they're hoping to do that for this as well. This is a 3D sketch of the proposed garage from the southwest corner. That's the big garage door opening and the northeast corner. So I know it's kind of hard to get a sense of how big it's going to be from these drawings. So I thought it would be useful to compare it to a garage that is on the block, which is the new garage that was built in 2009 at 18 Orchard Street. So this garage is 20 by 13 and it's 18 foot one to the ridge. So it's taller than what we are proposing, 11 foot one to the E. So it's also taller there. Eight inches from the rear yacht, rear lot line and six inches from the side lot line. So that is a little tighter. So this rear and side yard variance was granted in 2009. Bill, where a former garage was demolished. And the footprint was increased by 25% from the new garage. And you know, we realize that this doesn't give us permission to do what we're doing. But it's just as a point of reference and you get a sense of the bulk. Because I, I realize that the discussion before us here is the bulk and the position of the structure, not the aesthetics and not the history of it. So I thought it would help to have that as a point of reference. But more important was how the new garage would look from adjoining neighbors. So back to the house here, we'll see how it's going to look from 17 Mountain, 15 Mountain, the three houses across the street, which are 20, 18, and 16 Orchard, 13 Orchard, and then the house 204 Main Street, which is, is far away, but they have adjoining, adjoining lot lines. So we considered how each neighbor would be affected. We received letters of support from some of the neighbors. The owners have spoken to the immediate neighbors about the project and spoke to the neighbors on 17 Mountain Avenue, their closest neighbor, during the application process. And we can also hope that the previous garage was accepted as part of the fabric of the neighborhood. I, I'm not sure if anybody ever objected to the previous garage. So what would the neighbors see? So what would the neighbors see? So I created these montages, cut and paste collages. No fancy Photoshop here, but just took the drawing and plugged it in. So this is the view from 20 Orchard Street. And I used the existing wall as a scale because that's the height of the garage door. So I would get the size right. So that's what it would look like at the end of the driveway from across the street at 20 Orchard. From 18 Orchard, it starts to get obscured from the house, but you can still catch a little bit of it. And from 16, it's totally obscured by the house. From 13 Orchard next door, this is the fence here. And this is what it looks like now. So the tree would obstruct most of it. I realize that this is taken in the summer, so there's tons of leaves on it. But that's what you would see from 13 Orchard. For 17 Mountain Avenue, I didn't get far into their yards. I didn't want to trespass too much, but this is what you see, this is what you will see. So this is the existing fence and an existing trash bin. And that's that wall that remains. So this is what it would look like. And Megan has been in conversation with this neighbor about what to expect during construction surrounding their shared lot line and how the construction process might encroach on their property. Because as you can see, if it's sitting there, when you build a new foundation and footings, you need to dig a trench. But in order to minimize the area of disturbance, we're hoping to use the existing foundation wall from here to here of the old structure because that seems to be intact. And we only would need to build this part of the footing in the foundation, new, it's about three feet. So if you multiply that by about two feet for the trench, the area of disturbance to the neighbor would be about six square feet. And whatever we do, every effort will be made to minimize the disturbance. We also realize that that fence that's there may have to be temporarily removed to protect it from any damage during construction. And the trash bin can be lifted. It's not a permanent structure. It's sort of like, take it off. So that would also have to be set aside during construction, if I understand that correctly. So from 15 Mountain Avenue, this is the existing shed. And this is the existing garage at 17 Mountain. That is the wall. So this is what you would see from there. So you'd have that relationship between those two structures. And then finally, from 204 Main Street, from the distance, there's the wall. Here's what it would look like tucked into the trees, the garage. And then if you come up really close to the fence, there's the existing wall. And that's what it would look like from the side to that neighbor. So to summarize, I put these in a different order than you read them from a bold presentation. But the goal of the project not be achieved by any other feasible means. So after we looked at other options that would not require a variance, we think that this is the best and most practical location. The lot is restricted by its small size. Access is restricted by the existing driveway and the tree. The option that would not require a variance would require the tree be taken down or blacktop, and garage would be close to the center of the yard. And that would really not be in keeping with the neighborhood. The project will not produce a negative impact on the neighborhood. It will create a significant detriment to the surrounding properties. We think that there will be a positive impact on the neighborhood and an improvement on what's currently there. We considered the views from the neighbors, and the new garage will have a minimal effect on the neighboring properties. The project preserves the character of the neighborhood. Number three, the variance is not substantial. We're hoping to minimize the variance by increasing the rear setback from the old garage and by keeping the footprint similar to the old garage, in fact, smaller. Addition will not have an undesirable or negative physical or environmental effect on the neighborhood. Location of the garage will not require moving any trees or existing landscaping and can be achieved with existing blacktop. Runoff would be minimized as the building coverage remains unchanged from the previous garage. There will be gutters and rainwater harvesting. Number five, the difficulty was not self-created. The owners will be replacing an old garage that came down to structural reasons that arose emergently. The owners maintain the old garage, and its demolition was unforeseen. So in sum, the garage is in keeping with the character of public garages, continuing an existing pattern. The location of the old garage is part of the village fabric. Replacing the garage will recoup the space that the owners lost. And strict conformance to the code will prevent that replacement, which places a burden on the owners. And we think it's located where it belongs, and there will be a positive impact on the neighborhood. Thank you. Want me to keep this up? Do we have to go back?
I don't think so. We have printouts up here.
Okay, good. Want me to go up here?
Sure.
We're protecting that.
Oh, great!
I don't have a problem. I look at ceiling, which all those years, no problem.
Can I ask a question? A general question?
Certainly. Sure.
So I didn't have the benefit of being here at the last meeting. How do we consider the fact that there was a garage there previously?
In the case of this application, it doesn't matter. We treat the proposed garage as a new structure, consider it on its own merits. There's no inheriting, no grandfathering because the old garage was torn down, gone. So that's the difference. It's not a case of repairing an existing grandfathered structure. So, yeah, it's just purely, we're just going, there's a clause, in fact, that's a good point. I'll cite the exact clause that is involved here. 134 17A1B. 134 17... So 134 17A1B supplemental regulations. And then there's subsection A is about accessory buildings and garages. So these are the general rules for accessory buildings. Just if you want to build a new accessory building or a garage, it's got to meet these standards. There's nothing, no reference to pre-existing non-conforming or anything like that. It's just if you're starting from scratch, you've got to follow these rules, and that's what's applying, what applies here. So item B under that, or 1B rather, such building or garage shall be set back 10 feet from any lot line. And if separated from the principal building, shall not be located less than 10 feet from yet. So they do meet that. So that's why, Madeline, there's no narrow lot exception built into this particular provision, even though it's in that other section. So instead of 10 feet on the two sides, they've got one foot on one side and 7.5 feet on the other side. I would just say, as a starting point, my own view here is, this is a classic case of a clash between the code and the reality of the Old Village, where it's so classic and so typical of the Old Village, this kind of layout. A narrow lot, a house on one side, and then a driveway on the other side, and then a garage at the back of the driveway way over on the property line. You see that over and over.
It's an archetype, yeah.
Yeah. It's just the way they built things. There's nothing wrong with it. It's the way that it is. So we just have to accept that. And your proposal maintains that, that tradition. It's a traditional look. The code just doesn't recognize it, just fails to recognize that. So I think that's an example of the mismatch that owners in the Old Village face when they try to work with the zoning code. They're kind of boxed in, trying to follow rules that don't work for them.
I think it goes, as you indicated, it goes to the element of community character, particularly in this neighborhood because demonstration point out how many houses within that block radius have similar setups with the garage to the houses right on the property line, mostly because it's a narrow lot. It basically restricts options of where to place the garage. You can barely get the driveway past the house in order to get to the garage.
That's true. It's a thing.
I think how perverse it would be to try to mechanically conform to the code by placing the garage in the middle of the backyard and having a curving driveway go around the house. I mean, that would comply, but it would be so perverse and destructive of the livability of the lot and the aesthetics and the tradition, the homey tradition of that garage there on the side.
In addition to that, it's the added surface space where then we lose green spaces of community as well. That's the alternative. So I'm always thinking of, okay, then the alternative to be within the code is not necessarily positive for the community.
And that tree.
Everyone loves that tree.
Yes, as much as it is to keep space in one's backyard, it also, the code attempts to keep structures from being built right on property lines that could affect neighbors. Again, this case appears to be different because, well, again, it's a narrow lot, the backyard's small, aside from the tree. It becomes an issue of being practical about how it would be to back in and back out of the garage if you were to place the garage in the middle of the property. Because you don't have far to back up, you'll be going to the side yard of the neighbor. You're creating more blacktop space, as was stated. So, I mean, this is a situation, again, that because of the narrowness of all the lots, and this is apart from the fact that the community sets up their properties this way, but they do mostly because, again, they all have narrow lots. So, you know, in the balance, we don't like to see structures put right on somebody's property line. Nobody likes that. But this type of case is different because of the narrowness of the lot, the practicalness of trying to stick a garage somewhere in the middle, and then the cars can't even back up or back out. That's my opinion.
Are there any members of the public here who'd like to speak about the application? Go ahead. Just state your name and where you would live.
I'm Colbert, and I live at 15 Mountain Avenue. I knew silly glitch. I put her car in that driveway, in that garage. So I know it's narrow, but I don't see anything wrong with what she's going to do. And I thought that there was an existing wall. It's sort of not a new garage. If you have one existing wall, it means something. It's not completely brand new. I don't know if I'm right on that or not, but...
The one wall is not enough.
No, but why I'm saying that is when my children bought a house and tore everything down but one wall, and they're in Putnam, and they were told, it's almost that one wall up, they weren't making a new house. And they had one side, one wall. I just, you know, I, whatever. She says it's fine.
As a neighbor.
Whatever. I looked at the garage for all those years. No, Derek, we're looking at the project then. It doesn't matter.
That was probably the wall that was in the setback area that they didn't want to move. And again, it's the same thing up here at Fair Street, where it used to be the filling station. And it goes from one end of the property, the other abroad. The building, construction end comes right up to the sidewalk. And they left all the walls up. Because they knew if they took everything down, they would have to fit within the 10-yard setbacks. So not only that, 25-foot, you know, front yard setbacks unless they can show what the community character was with regards to the setbacks of the neighboring buildings.
Thank you.
Sir?
I'm Tom Malane at 17 Mountain Avenue, aka the neighbor to the north. And the one with the fence and the closest to the property. And I have no problem, and my partner and I fully support the project. We were living in the house since 2008 and had seen the old garage. It really was in poor shape.
It was.
We're excited. This looks nice. Megan and Mike have met with us continually, addressed concerns. We're all on the same page that if the board were worried, like, well, is the neighbor comfortable during construction? Absolutely. You know, we're good. And, you know, we'd be happy if the board approved it for them. On another note, thank you for the time you put in. You know, most of us, I guess, only attend these meetings when it affects us, and you don't realize it's going on all the time. And I really appreciate the time you all put in. It really impacts everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. We got three written comments as well. And I'll go over them now. There's copies of them. You got them by email as well. The first one is from Michelle Smith, 13 Orchard Street. I live at 13 Orchard Street, adjacent to 15 Orchard Street. I write to express my full support for the application of Megan Shea and Michael Goulorn for a variance to build a garage closer than 10 feet to the western and northern lot lines. Without this variant, the applicant would be forced to build a garage where there is now a beautiful, large, old cherry tree that has become an important part of our neighborhood and provides shade, beauty, and habitat for a multitude of bird and insect species. Building a garage outside the full setback would force removal of that tree and adversely impact our environment and the character of our community. The design of the proposed garage is very appealing and consistent with the character of our street. It will also provide the applicant with space to store tools and recreation gear so that it doesn't have to be kept outside. For the benefit of the community and our natural resources, I urge the ZBA to approve the variance for this garage. Number two is from John Plummer and Maya Guest, 16 Orchard Street. We're writing in support of the garage being proposed by our neighbors Mike Goulorn and Megan Shea at 15 Orchard Street. Mike and Megan are wonderful neighbors, and we fully endorse their project, which will be a great enhancement to their property and to the neighborhood. Number three is from Matthew Francisco and Joseph Patrick, 18 Orchard Street. My husband and I, Joe Patrick, are writing in support of our neighbors Megan Shea and Michael Goulorn's application for rear and side yard variances to reconstruct their garage at the original setback. garage at the original setbacks at 15 Orchard Street. We are the neighboring property directly across the street with a full view of the garage when it was standing. We have been in 18 Orchard Street for over twenty years and the garage was standing for most of that time until a few years back, when the new owners were forced to take it down. This was done on an emergency basis when they discovered serious structural issues while working on the rear boundary retaining wall. We feel the structure in its original location at the rear boundary directly at the end of the drive contributed to neighborhood character and should be rebuilt in that location as this is in keeping with the other garages now standing on our street. We appreciate that they will be reusing the original garage doors in keeping with the utilitarian style of the old garage. Finally, we greatly appreciate that the ridge line height will be kept low, similar to the original single-story garage built, to preserve the significant view shed of the mountains to the west. Okay, so three written and two spoken, all in favor of the application.
So 13 is the house immediately to the south?
Correct.
Okay. So they're the ones who have that broad side view, the west image you showed. When you, when you did a, um, sort of a imprint of your little cutout in the yard.
That last one that I showed is 204 Mountain Avenue, this is 204 Main Street. This one. This is from 204 Main.
That was 204 Main?
Mm-hmm. But 13, um, well, 13 Orchard will also have a similar view, but I wasn't able to go into their yard fully, like, I didn't want to trespass, so I just...
But they, they, they were given notice and haven't responded.
204 Main, um, well, he sent me those photos.
He sent us these, yeah.
Yeah, to be able to show you.
Okay.
So, he's in good favor.
And you're the house, the greenhouse on the corner.
Corner of Orchard and Mountain, yes.
Yeah, okay, so you're right to the north, as you said.
Correct.
Adjacent. So the original length of the garage was how long?
Eleven by twenty.
Eleven by twenty, now it's eleven by?
Now it's twelve by eighteen.
Twelve by eighteen, but it's also moved three feet forward.
That's right.
And that creates how much space to the rear, seven and a half?
Seven and a half.
Well, I don't have any further questions.
I don't either, I just, I think it's, um, important to acknowledge the overwhelming community support of those of you that are here and speaking for your fellow neighbor and, uh, those that have written in.
As well as, uh, how well this is all put together. If every application was like this, uh...
That's true.
It'd be a lot easier to find a way through it.
If nobody has other questions or comments, I will movingly close the public hearing.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the hearing is closed. Do board members have any comments to make before we talk about the five factors?
Well, I think we've been mentioning a lot of them.
Yeah.
And I think everything is well-stated on the very last page of this application. Of course, it's, uh, the applicant's view, but it's accurate.
So number one, um, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties by the granting of the area variance? John?
Uh, no, there won't be, um, in fact, for the way it used to be, uh, there'll be more space to the rear, the garage is made a little smaller, even though it's a little higher, uh, but it, it, architecturally, it's gonna look a lot nicer. And it's, uh, so I don't, yeah, that's certainly it.
Mary Ann?
Uh, no, and especially given all the support from the neighbors, I would not, um, say that it would be an undesirable change to the neighborhood.
Heath?
No, both the verbal and the written comments from the, the neighbors speak to the character comments of, of the neighborhood.
I agree, um, and I would also add that, um, when we've, with an application like this, when we think about potential detriment to neighbors, we, we try to put ourselves in the place of that next-door neighbor who's now, who's got a garage suddenly, like, one foot away. And I think it, it's important to keep in mind that it's not black and white what that neighbor thinks, I mean, it's not necessarily, that neighbor, it, we can't put too much word, too many words into that neighbor's mouth and the future neighbors, future people who live there, because there is a way in which some might appreciate the barrier, the privacy, we just can't, can't know that. So it's, we, we can't even automatically assume it will be seen as detrimental to have that new building there in the eyes of the neighboring. So that's, I never put too much weight on that notion, I never assume that this is a, a black, just a total negative in the view of the next-door neighbor.
Well, and I'll just add to that, since we're on this topic, without specifying, there was another application before, it's where, uh, sort of the same layout, uh, bigger property, though, far bigger.
I was thinking that I do.
So 192 Main?
I don't wanna get into it because I let other people do their homework, but, uh, I think that, I think the, uh, proposed garage, it was gonna be more than just a garage, uh, along, right along the neighbor's line, it was gonna be like twenty-five or thirty feet, thirty feet, it might have been longer than that. But the view shed to the rear was out, over, uh, pretty much of an overlook. And so that whole property would have been sort of shielded from that view and, uh, the neighbors, uh, to the north were not happy. But there's an example of a structure accessory building being built along the property line, set right off the driveway, going straight back. But there's a difference here, there's a difference, you know, substantial, but again, I don't want to get into specifics, um, but we treat each, uh, application differently and, uh, that's just it.
Yeah, those two cases show the, how, how everything rests on individual cases and the individual facts of each case, and there is no such thing as simply doing what we did before, rubber stamping just because.
And it's not arbitrary at all, we simply look at the facts and see what's important, you know, and, uh, not what's important, but what the code anticipates, what, what the neighbors anticipate and what the, uh, uh, sort of the, uh, the gist of the zoning code is trying to achieve. I like you.
This is our, our fifth board member, Laura Bozey. We're in the middle of fifteen, in fact, the hearing's closed and we are going to fly back to the...
I think I will abstain, but I...
Okay. All right, so we all spoke on number one. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Mary Ann, I know you love this one, so I'm gonna start to you.
Okay, no, because of that tree. And because of the factor you brought up about the, the coverage of with losing green space and the more, uh, pavement that would be needed and so forth, so, um, no.
Heath?
I agree with, with Mary Ann and I would say no, um, I think there's a, you know, whether it's the conversation with the refurbished portions of the previous garage, the plan to minimize the disturbance, and I think even just the stability factor, um, you know, and maybe not all of those apply to this specific, uh, question with the test, but I, I see that as a reason to say no, in addition to what Mary Ann has shared.
John?
Yeah, I agree with the points all made and the fact that the narrowness of the lot, uh, also restricts, um, what can be done with, uh, the shed of the garage over here.
I, I agree with everything and I would add that, um, preserving the traditional, configuration of structures is, um, important and it's one of the undoubted, or I think that they have mentioned that is one of the benefits sought, and that would not be achieved if they had to move the garage outside the setbacks. Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial, um, I will start by saying I think it is substantial, um, and that's, reflects the, the extent to which the code is incongruent with this traditional kind of lot. A narrow lot, certain placement of, of houses, um, inevitably, there's gonna be a substantial, uh, variance involved, so yes, it is substantial. Heath?
Yes, it is substantial, I think, to your point earlier though, too, it's the, the clash of the code and the reality of the old village, as you said.
John?
It's substantial, but mitigated, uh, by a lot of the criteria, by a lot of the factors we mentioned, including the fact that the, uh, old, what was the old garage will be made smaller by two feet to the rear and open up more space, seven, virtually seven and a half feet or seven feet to the back that wasn't there.
Mary Ann?
It's substantial.
Thank you. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. John?
Uh, it will not, it might, um, put more of an obstruction as to, you know, minimal view shed, but the neighbor across the street felt that, uh, the, the roof was low enough to not interfere terribly, um, you know, you put any bulk structure in the backyard, it's gonna have some diminishment of, uh, environmental, but, uh, again, to mitigate that statement, uh, they're gonna do the water capturing, um, you know, to make it a sustainable, a sustainable use of, for the rainwater.
Heath?
I agree, um, I think that there is the thoughtful likelihood also that this is better for the environment.
You mean because of what?
Uh, due to what's in line, which is the, the, with Philistine, Planet Smart, I, I don't want to move on to speculate, but what I'm hearing in the planning is that it's incongruency with some of the, the efforts in the, the green space.
Which aspects of the project that were you stating?
Oh, the John-specific comments about the, the water.
Right, okay. Uh, Mary Ann?
No, no negative impact.
And Eric, I forgot to add, again, that you're opening up space to the rear, just like I mentioned, so environmentally, that, you know, it reduces the size.
With the greater rear setback, yeah, okay. And I would agree with everything, no impact, there are no significant impact. And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created and, um, there I would have to say it is self-created, even though the old garage fell down or had to be demolished, um, in, in the technical sense, um, the applicants were not required to build anything there in its place, and, but they've chosen to with good reason, but it still means it's their initiative. And Mary Ann?
Um, yes, it was self-created.
John?
That's one of the rare times, but I would say it's not self-created because they came and bought a house, they had a garage, and, uh, and then the back wall collapsed, a wall that was not necessarily theirs, I think, it's a retaining wall of the neighbors.
Retaining wall is theirs.
It was ours.
That's yours, so...
Yeah, but I mean, it's...
But still, it collapsed, so...
Well, it's not good practice to build a garage on top of a retained wall.
I'm sure you would...
Retained wall's supposed to retain earth, not support a building.
But they would have paid less if there was no garage for the property and they bought a house with a garage, so...
Yeah.
I just, I just feel this is one of the rare times where it's not self-created, in my mind.
Okay, Heath?
I'll say yes to stick with the language of the code, but with that aspect of understanding and appreciating the presentation and the, and John's points.
All right, uh, so I'll look back and summarize, um, number one, undesirable change came down to favor the application, we all said no undesirable change. Number two, came down, um, to favor the application, no other feasible means to achieve the benefit. Number three, whether it's substantial, uh, that, that goes against the application, we all said yes, it is substantial. Number four, uh, physical or environmental impact, that goes in favor of the application, we all said no. And number five, um, self-created, it was a mixed vote, um, so, um, on balance, we've got, um, we've got three in favor, one against, and then number five, self-created is mixed. And the ones that are in favor are the more important ones, well, I wouldn't say that, but, um, the important point about undesirable change falls in favor of the applicant and the one about other means falls in favor. So those are two important ones in particular. Substantial goes against, and that's important, too. I, I read those results as, on balance, leaning toward approval.
I make a motion to approve, uh, the application, uh, for the variances, uh, for the side, rear setbacks, the, the amount of seven and a half feet to the rear, nine feet, I think it is, for the side. Yeah, I think the variance would be ninety feet.
That's right, that's right, so that the variance to the rear is two and a half.
Oh, two and a half feet, right. See, I flip-flopped there.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, so four approve and one abstain, and, um, your application is accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, thanks for your time on the office.
You're welcome.
Thanks for this book, I'm just gonna give to everybody who comes before us and say, uh, this is what we're looking for. At every, at every workshop.
Well, you can thank my son because he got me this. Showed me how to hook it up, he got me this on Amazon. Studying computer science.
You just can't take it to a sports, uh, arena and point at any athlete twice while they're trying to get it. Do I go?
Thank you for coming.
So, how you doing?
Oh, awesome.
Oh, you, you, you noticed they took the clock?
Definitely hopeful, told me to do that.
Oh, yeah, good, well, that makes sense.
Take the clock down?
No, no, we, we had a, a presentation.
I thought it was to, like, not notice how wrong it was a little bit.
Yeah, that we're in the room too long for COVID, so the cats come over. Better? Yeah, it takes, it takes a while. Always, always taking me that, like, separate fractures or, that's, you know, PT, they won't even allow me a PT because I can get clearance for the class. Who's had that today at 3:30, they're like, no. What else can you add to this, are those the minutes in yellow?
Yes.
Oh.
There are two, two minutes here.
In yellow.
Which are not, they're not too long, so why don't, let's look at the first one, August, it's, um, they're both here, each one has his two inches. Let's look at August 19. I guess, um, John and Laura were absent, so we're excused from having to...
Yeah, let me mention to you, we... Yeah, let me mention to you, we never mentioned the, the application across the street, even though everyone is different.
Yeah, so that's why I didn't, that you just didn't, it wasn't necessary to get into it.
But I appreciated it as a point of reference.
It's important and interesting to see as a historical, I noticed they, they didn't generate.
I didn't think about the decision. I didn't, I didn't think about that.
They didn't generate resolution, they generated a record of decision.
Right.
But, so I don't know what, why it's different. Why would it be different now?
Well, yes, so that it's harder to rely on. So, but we know it would be different or you treat the applications differently. But, but it's hard to explain.
Yeah.
Anyway, go ahead. Sorry.
So.
August 19.
Yeah, you're, you're excused, John, because you weren't at the meeting. You're excused from having to read this. This was McDonald's public hearing.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
The only thing I'd like to point out is that the three of us successfully wrapped up the meeting and adjourned at 8:45 PM.
A little over, a little over an hour.
And it was, it was complex too. I, I, well, I think they are.
They had three issues.
I think they're all complex myself, but.
So the date needs to be corrected in line three, it's June 17th, changed to August 19. Now, I would say in the section on the workshop for Three High Street, the last line is he worth to advise applicant of next steps. What I really thought happened then was the applicant said he would, they would consider whether to revise the application in light of the information that came out during the workshop.
Yeah, I think we were careful not to lead the applicant in any way because they started to ask the questions. So I think you're, you're rephrasing it.
I think I did say that I would get back to him to confirm the points, but then he could, but I wasn't going to tell him his next steps. I was just going to confirm what I said during the workshop. So, but he, then he said that he was essentially withdrawing the application temporarily in order to revise it. So I think that it's important to get that in.
I don't see anything else.
How about you? You're okay?
I'm good. It's good.
Okay. I move that we accept the minutes of August 19th as, as amended.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, three ayes with two extensions. So let's move on and this time Mary Ann or excused. And then the bulleted list on the first page, the second item, footprint of new garage places at one foot instead of into setback, I think we need to say from the side lot line and seven point five feet from the rear lot line.
Right.
To get both of them.
That's what I was going to say. That's the only thing I saw being not accurate. Yeah, if you want to take a photograph, I mean, I can take a photograph and take it to you, but.
Well, I, I texted to you earlier, John.
Did you?
Earlier, yeah, around seven I think.
Yeah, our office, I, I thought I would put it, I nev, it came through, I wasn't looking for it and.
Photos aren't, photos aren't required.
No.
So maybe it should say, none of the applicants will need to submit or revise Sony Form of Chart and encourage to submit photos.
Yeah.
Excellent. I think I'm just going to bring that thing that they put together today and say, this is what, this is what we're looking for. There's nothing more to be said. Why don't you page through it? You know, it's all shadowed. You got it? Cheek notes.
Any other corrections?
No.
Does someone want to move that we accept?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as amended.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Four, four ayes and one extension. Next, the resolution on 10 B Street. The three of us, only three of us were here for that hearing and I think that was Keith and Mary Ann. So if you would look at, look at this draft. John?
How do you feel? You're the chairman. He does everything.
I, I think there are pros either way. I guess I would come down the side of Zoom. I'm, I'm not unhappy with the in-person. I hate the masks, I guess, the force thing. And I hate dragging everyone out.
Yeah, that, that, that's the way to look at it. One, one big way.
So I would come down the side of Zoom. I could live with either way.
So we can be probably pretty much, Jeff, assured that we'll see all copies of whatever we need online or should we come in and try to pick them up or what do you say?
Well, we are requesting everybody to submit everything, at least one digital copy so that's sent out. As we get to the public hearings, everything's put on the website under current applications.
Are you going to still get hard copies?
Yes.
Okay, so if we wanted to get one, we just come in and we'll call you in advance?
Yeah, the requirements won't change as far as they exist now.
Okay.
So I'm sort of thinking about public participation and I think there's pros on either side of in-person and Zoom. If it's Zoom, sometimes you tend to get more, you know, public participation because it's easier for people. But in my very, very limited experience, the quality of the public participation in person is, is, is really superior. But I, I, I'm new at this, so I, I, it's not an argument against Zoom. I personally would prefer Zoom. I think it's safer for all of us. I think it's certainly more convenient. But I was trying to think of it from a public participation perspective.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think from a public participation perspective, my vantage point is that it's probably more inclusive via Zoom in the current state. I think there's a level of professionalism that we've seen with the, in the presence of being present versus what you experienced early on with Zoom, where there's a, a different caliber maybe of presentation. I think from just us walking in this evening and having an arraignment before we walk in, I was slightly uncomfortable thinking, wow, there's no windows back there. And there's somebody who's not necessarily, I'm not, I don't want to speculate, but there's somebody being hauled out by the police and, you know, I'm not wanting to walk right in the room with somebody that might be an offender right after them. And then I think about Jeff and the continual meetings in the current state. So I'm, I'm pro Zoom and also trying to balance, I think it's just, there's actually a level of presence that I feel like is more attainable in the current state in being in attendance for these should something arise where I can't physically also be in the community. I'm also somebody who likes, even with all the papers, I'm more organized following the meeting on the screen. Even though this is really helpful in times, I'm more organized by still tracking with what's on the screen.
Eric, have you heard from an applicant that they have difficulty participating via Zoom or like?
No.
Because you can imagine like technologic, like especially someone that's not on their computer all the time, that that would be a barrier and, but it, I feel like it would have come out in the last year or so. Or maybe if you can like just be receptive of, of understanding any issues that someone flags to you and then we can try to be as, I don't know if this would back, but like I, I guess that's the main, that's the main concern that I would have is if an applicant like doesn't have an architect and can't do Zoom and this is like, you know, a way that makes it really hard for them to participate. Because otherwise, I agree, I think we have more participation from the public and it, and it helps meet people where they're at of like events, people have commitments and kids that they can't leave and all that sort of thing. So.
Keep up, yeah. Going to Zoom, it's not a mandate from the state. They're just making an exception to the open meetings law and they're extending that through January. I anticipate when all said and done that they'll probably, this will end up becoming law.
But what will become law?
Well, that you can have these meetings this way via Zoom and that necessarily, everything doesn't have to be in person. I think you'll see a loosening of the open meetings law.
Even post that pandemic, right?
Yeah. I think one of the lessons learned from the last year is that.
It can be done.
It can be done and the technology exists now that didn't exist 20 years ago when the open meetings law was written.
Right, right.
So I think Laura had a good point, that if somebody is not tech savvy and they're trying to, you know, get in a variance or something, if we can discuss it amongst ourselves to see whether we can make the accommodation.
Yeah.
Well, I can, first step of the process in the contact is I ask them when they would like to have a workshop. And at that point, I can ask them, are you comfortable doing this in the Zoom?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And if they say no, or if any, if they have any hesitation, I can offer them in, in person, we can have the hearing in person. For, to make, make an exception, come in for one, one application.
The last thing I was going to mention, is there any set of easy instructions that would assist them to work Zoom that we could get, you know, to them and they can say, well, I can, I can, I can try doing this way or?
I don't know. I feel like that falls in the same conversation. If, if I back that conversation up, we have certain expectations where we want to see views and, and certain, I feel like that's incumbent on the applicant. I, I'd want to be careful and encourage in putting that language out there for Zoom assistance.
I would always be ready to help them if, I mean, everybody, technologically, everybody's got different equipment. It's kind of hard to have a single sheet, one-page instruction. So I could, if, if they're hesitant, if they're like, well, I don't know, I haven't done it before, but I've got this phone, you know, I can help them.
Okay, all right, just curious.
Yeah.
The last thing.
I don't think we've run into that in the last year and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That I can recall that somebody has been adamant about not being able to participate, not having the capability.
Yeah, good.
You got to keep waving this on the Zoom workshop, okay? You got to go like this. You got to go on the Zoom workshop. You see this? This is, this is what we're looking for.
Could I ask about the meeting time? Is there a reason in particular it's at 7:30 and not earlier or something?
Not, I don't, I have no idea why it's, it's that way.
I think all Village meetings are at seven, all board meetings now?
No.
Trustees vary a little bit, don't they?
Trustees are at 6:30, 7 o'clock for the monthly meeting. HGRB is at 7:30. They used to be at 8 o'clock. Planning Board's at 7 o'clock. It's up to the Board. Recreation is at 6 o'clock, so.
The Board is free to set anytime.
Correct.
Do you, Mary Ann, are you hinting at a dissatisfaction with 7?
Oh, I'm not. I was just wondering if it could be earlier, you know, to.
I would prefer it earlier too.
Would you? I just, I don't know what people's preferences are.
Well, if it's Zoom, it could possibly be earlier, but you know, I mean, if I end up going back down the city on a regular basis, it's more of a problem.
Right.
But then it would have to be Zoom because nobody would let me in the room.
How do others feel about the timing?
I'm open to.
Yeah, whatever anybody else thinks is fine.
I'm likely to have a six to seven, you know, meeting on Thursdays. This must be I'm likely to have a six to seven meeting on Thursdays this semester. So I could do seven, but I expect that to happen and then I would be able to do earlier.
What about the public? What is the average, in general, what do we think? I mean, do people have dinner first and then come here?
Yeah, but I still, I mean, I think, I guess I think seven, in my mind, there's like a, that, this is just my own schedule, it gives time to like have dinner after work and like do the things you need to do in your evening and then get here. I think if, and there's time, if it's at six, then it, in my mind, that cuts, that cuts everything in half. And I think that could be, that seems challenging to me.
Trying to look at the train times to see if the evening times, for example, with the eventual back in the city.
Yeah. There's a train that gets in at like 7:10 or something.
Well, should we just consider it, that we'll think about it and then?
Okay. I mean, we couldn't do it earlier than seven because.
Correct.
Yes, seven would be the earliest, I would think.
There are, and actually going back to the train line comment, there are quite a few more options than there ha-, than there were last month. So there's some arrival at 6:46, 6:26, but the other one's 7:07 right now.
There was one at 7:07. So people could come earlier then, could get here by seven if they needed to. If it was seven, would people be, people who are, would people be like wolfing down their dinner and bowling out of the house to get here?
I think I would be.
Would you? Yeah.
Tonight's an example of, gosh, I'm not getting to dinner, so I'm gonna get to it earlier because of when we wrap up now. Having moved it, if we moved it up.
Right, 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 right.
What were you gonna say? I interrupted Jeff.
Oh, no. I, I just, I, I have said, I think I have a very different schedule than a lot of people. So, yeah, I mean, I think people just have different schedules depending on what they do, so.
We've had some epically long meetings. When there are meetings that we finish at like 11 or something that were exhausting. And so in that way, moving it earlier means like you don't have possible us and the, the public like staying up really late, so I guess that's one of the pieces for it.
And I think one thing we learned from one or two long meetings is if we wanna call on our chairman, we're calling it. We're not, we're not gonna let the public influence us to stay on to the last minute and see if you can throw that Hail Mary touchdown, you know, because we don't have to do that.
Yeah, that's true.
Nobody's paying us to, if they wanna pay us, that's pay to play.
The Board of Trustees has been trying to keep their minutes, their meetings to two hours. Not, it's not always successful, but that's kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good, it's really reasonable, it's a good idea.
Especially at night, people just, they lose interest, they fade.
Yeah.
Yeah, as Jeff sits here, he's like, guys, I'm fading.
Yeah, I know, he's like, he's like.
I've kind of gotten used to it.
It's just like the Yankees fading.
Is there, is there a consensus to switch to seven?
I, I would like to do that.
I would be okay with that. Okay with everybody? John, you seem to have hesitation about it.
Well, you know, I don't know. I do a lot of different things, like I was out doing, putting up lights for a big band we're playing, having down at the Little Stoney Point Center where, you know, one of the volunteer committee there put hundreds of hours into the state park, so like I'm always trying to squeeze these things in.
That's kind of what Laura was saying, there's that interval in the early evening when you have things.
If everybody wants seven, I'll do seven, see how it is.
Keith, what do you think?
Especially if it's Zoom.
I, I mean.
I can stay at the office and go on, Jim.
I, I'm really indifferent, so I don't wanna be able to decide.
Laura, you were leaning toward seven, or is that gonna be probably you have the six to seven class? Is he gonna immediately switch over?
Well, if it's on Zoom, I can do it, yeah.
Should we shift to seven while operating on Zoom and then reconsider? Or, I don't know, does that get them confusing for the public?
We can switch back. The people don't, I mean, nobody comes right to it.
I told Mary Ann before, actually, every agenda I re-look at, I go, it's not seven, it's 7:30. I always think I'm supposed to be this.
All right, well, let's, Laura, let's try seven for the next, next meeting.
Just try it, yeah. And if it doesn't work for people.
Perfect. So Jeff, do you have to, did that email message say you have to notify the newspapers that are, we're going on to Zoom now?
No.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
I second it.
All in favor?
Wow, look at these chairs now. How long have they been here? Is it just?
We kind, us, right when COVID hit, is we, we did everything. Roll me chairs.
It's amazing.
Thank you, yeah.
The other, the other ones were like sitting on carpet, right?
Oh, yeah, they were terrible. They were just like rejects from West Point in 1970.
It's pretty fast. Makes you want to come to trustee.
You know, when we had those like, those blue plastic. Cafeteria chairs.
Yeah, you don't want those people sitting there comfortable.
What was the vote on the first one?
Thanks for everything, Jeff.
Approval.
A good night, everybody.
Night.
Good to see you. And I'm also glad that they weren't controversial.
Yeah, exactly. We didn't be really, they were both pretty much slammed off.